All right. Good evening, everybody. We might as well get started. For those of you who may be watching on YouTube, I am Dan Power, the Planning and Economic Development Director. I'll just go over tonight's agenda and just remind folks how to join the meeting. If you're watching YouTube and you want to get over to Zoom and participate. We are still, of course, doing this meeting remotely, although we're hearing about various changes to that effect. We are able to still do this meeting remotely tonight. It was noticed as such. I will share some information on a screen here about the agenda and how to participate, like I said. So as with all the meetings we've been doing recently, you can participate by raising your hand in your Zoom screen, using the chat button or pressing star nine. Tonight's agenda will include various items, starting with the introduction of the agenda, the minutes. There is one public hearing item regarding zoning ordinance text amendments pertaining to marijuana caregivers. There's also new business or request for action on those zoning ordinance text amendments, as well as a review of a potential temporary land use event series, a small event series called Small Business Saturdays, proposed at the Walmart site on Belleville Road. I'll also provide some brief updates on some residential projects and some projects at the airport. So with no further ado, I will turn this over to our Planning Commission Chair Carol Thompson for tonight's agenda.
Thanks, Director Powers. Welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting for the Charter Township of Van Buren for Wednesday, October 14th of 2020. We'll start with a roll call, please, Ms. Harms.
Medina Atchison. Sherry Budd.
Here.
Brian Kelly is excused. Donald Boynton.
Here.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
Joan Fransway.
Here.
Carol Thompson.
Here. And I believe Medina is with us. Is she maybe muted? Do we get her?
She does appear to be muted. She was with us a bit earlier. She may be toggling in, so we can just note if and when she returns.
Great. We'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the agenda before us. Is there a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Boynton.
Support.
Commissioner. Is that Commissioner Jar for the support?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Do a roll call vote to approve, please.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Medina Atchison. Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. All right. Our agenda is approved. We also have minutes from the meeting of September 23rd of 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Commissioner Boynton, support.
Support.
Commissioner Fransway, any changes or corrections to the minutes? Then we'll have a roll call vote to approve the motion, please.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Medina Atchison.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yep.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. All right. So the minutes are approved. The first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. The item is medical marijuana caregiver zoning ordinance amendments. The proposed amendments to limit medical marijuana caregiver activities authorized under Michigan Initiated Law 1 of 2008. The amendments will be to section 2.102 definitions, specific terms, and Article 7 general provisions. Is there a motion to open the public hearing, please?
So move.
Commissioner Boynton.
Support.
Commissioner Atchison. And quick roll call vote to open the public hearing, please.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Medina Atchison.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. So our public hearing is now open. We will welcome comments to this agenda item. If you would like to speak to this agenda item, variety of ways that you can participate in the Zoom meeting that Director Powers outlined. Please let us know that you want to speak if you would tell us your name and address. And if you would keep your comments specific to this agenda item, there'll be opportunities to speak on other agenda items later in the meeting. But first, we'll have a presentation on the item that we're under consideration. Director Powers, are you leading that or are we going to Mr. Greco?
I can give a brief overview if you give me. And then we'll primarily hear from our township attorney, Mr. Greco. I guess as part of the public hearing, just to give a very brief overview, we are considering land use regulations under the township's purview with respect to medical marijuana under, as was mentioned, the state of Michigan's 2008 Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, or MMMA. This has been a collaborative discussion with our council along with township staff from the Public Services and Public Safety Departments. You will see the ordinance language in the text that has been posted to the agenda. So what I may do is recommend you can proceed with public hearing and then perhaps in the deliberation and recommendation section, if you'd like to have more of a presentation from the township attorney at that time, we could move into more of a discussion at that time. Does that work for the Planning Commission?
Sure. I think that's great. Do we know if we have any members of the audience who wish to speak to this agenda item?
I do not see any hands raised, so we'll continue to monitor that, but I don't see any chat items or public hands raised from the public at this time.
Okay. Anyone on the commission? Can wait until you have discussion on the action item, but if you have anything that you'd like to raise now, anyone? All right. Check in again, anyone in the audience? All right. I'm prepared to close the public hearing at this point. Is there a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Boynton, support.
Support.
Commissioner Jar. And we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Medina Atchison.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. So that concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. But the next item on the agenda is the same item, the recommendation on the medical marijuana caregiver zoning ordinance amendments. Amendments again are proposed to limit medical marijuana caregiver activities that's authorized under Michigan Initiated Law 1 of 2008. Amendments to be the section of, to be in the section of 2.102 definitions, specific terms, and Article 7 general provisions. And we'll have a presentation now, please, from staff and our township attorney.
Thank you. So after my very brief overview, I'd like to turn this over for a more in-depth review by the township attorney, Mr. Dave Greco. So with no further ado, he can go ahead.
All right. Very good. Good evening, everyone. Hey, Dave. So what has been presented to you is a zoning ordinance text amendment to regulate as best we can the medical marijuana caregiver. Now, I'm going to give just a brief overview. I think Dan did a great job on his memo and his intro here. But with marijuana and all the things in the news, we've got a couple of things I want to just create the history and then get to where we're at tonight. Is that in 2008, you know, it was a voter referendum to pass the Medical Marijuana Act. That specific Medical Marijuana Act basically decriminalized, didn't legalize, but decriminalized the use of medical marijuana under the circumstances that are provided in that act. That is, number one, you had to apply to the state to get a medical marijuana card, which meant you had to get some sort of certification by a doctor, which I think was easy enough to get. And also it created this medical marijuana caregiver, which means that you could have a medical marijuana card and have a certain amount of medical marijuana in your possession and grow some for yourself. But also it created this caregiver, which, and then referred to as patients, where a caregiver could be a medical marijuana user to grow and harvest and present marijuana to themselves and to up to five patients. All right? And the limits under the statute were for personal use, you could have up to 12 plants and a certain amount of ounces of marijuana, usable marijuana. And then if you were a medical marijuana caregiver, you could have up to five patients and up to 12 plants per patient. So if you're a medical marijuana user, plus you are a caregiver and have five patients, you could grow up to 72 plants. And which is frankly, a lot of plants. So as is typical been around the country with the passage of a medical marijuana referendum or act, as soon as that gets passed, everyone in the industry, I'll call it, tries to figure out ways to commercialize marijuana and get into the business of marijuana and is basically what's been going on for the past 12 years in Michigan. Now, the Medical Marijuana Act is the one thing that provides for medical marijuana, individual use caregiver, growing a certain amount of plants. Then a couple of years ago, the state legislature did, well, within the last couple of years, has passed to, I'll call them the commercial licensing medical marijuana stuff, which is distinguishable from this. Okay? So when you see in Ypsilanti or in Ann Arbor or in other places around Michigan where there's advertisements for dispensaries, provisioning centers, and then you hear about grow facilities, all that stuff, that's all commercial medical and recreational marijuana stuff. That's distinguishable from what we're talking about tonight and the Medical Marijuana Act. Now, those of you, you may know, I know Treasurer Bud knows that we have, the township has previously opted out of having commercial facilities in the township, both medical and recreational. Okay? So that's something that's been done already by the township board. Now, what we can't and haven't been able to regulate is, and it's everyone's right pursuant to passage of the voters, is possess marijuana, medical marijuana, now you could possess recreational, you don't have to have a medical marijuana card anymore. But under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, it was very hard to regulate and figure out what's going on. And really, on a personal basis, you know, it's very limited in what cities and townships can do. Again, marijuana is legal now recreationally, medically, you're allowed to have it, you're allowed to grow a certain amount of plants, both in this community and in other communities I represent. I mean, especially for the first couple of years, you know, the adjustment for the police departments or the public safety departments has always been, you know, giving me a call, hey, Dave, you know, this guy's got marijuana, or we went into this house and we went here for different reasons and there's marijuana. And I've always said, well, I don't know, count the plants, how many plants do they have? Do they have a card? You know, now they don't. I mean, there hasn't been a lot that we can do. Now, and now with that, you do get complaints from time to time, particularly in residential neighborhoods regarding the smell, regarding what people are doing or growing next door. I mean, not too much. It happens. I mean, everyone seems to understand that marijuana is here to stay and we're all kind of smelling it from time to time out in the public and maybe in the neighborhood. So for the past really 12 years, other than the opting out on the commercial, which is pretty clear under the statutes that we did and other communities can do, it's been very hard to regulate what goes on under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. And various townships and municipalities have tried different things. And I can tell you that for 12 years, the townships and municipalities have basically lost every case, both in the trial court and the Court of Appeals and even the Supreme Court of Michigan, because the cases have just come down and said, you know, how many plants do they have? They're allowed to have a caregiver. There's no limit on where they can be. As long as they have it, you can prosecute them. And there's really been nothing that we can do. But in those cases, they've always indicated, particularly the Supreme Court, that, you know, this is not to say that a municipality can't regulate it at all. It's just what they've tried to do in this particular case, you can't do. Okay? So then there was this case called DeRouyter versus Byron Township. Byron Township is on the western side of the state, if some of you are familiar with it. And what Byron Township did is it passed a local ordinance, zoning ordinance, very similar to what you have in front of you today, that basically said, if you are a medical marijuana caregiver under the Medical Marijuana Act, number one, we're going to limit your activities to a home occupation. That is, you cannot do this in a commercial building. And we're going to limit the space and how you do it to a certain extent. Okay? Now, that was kind of a big deal because the discussion that I, other lawyers, municipal lawyers and law enforcement always had was, well, we know you can grow medical marijuana, but it doesn't say where you can or where you can't. And very often, we were having these caregivers or throughout the state, there was an issue regarding caregivers, both A, you may be purchasing a residential home and not living in it and just growing marijuana, or B, having it in the back of a commercial facility or in a warehouse or behind a party store and all those things. And up until this time, there was really nothing that we can do. Now, this Byron Township ordinance, basically, like I said, made this a home occupation and prohibited it from commercial buildings. All right. So as is typical of the last 12 years, Byron Township lost in the trial court because the court said, look, it's the Medical Marijuana Act, it doesn't say where you can and can't have it. If you can have it in your house, you can have it in a commercial facility, your own. Certainly, any commercial facility or anyone's own home can prohibit marijuana themselves. Okay? But, and then in the Court of Appeals, Byron Township lost again, again, for the same reasoning. Now, this past summer, the Michigan Supreme Court, in kind of a surprise decision to all of us, came down finding in favor of Byron Township and saying that there's nothing about Byron Township's zoning ordinance that is preventing anybody from engaging in being a caregiver or having medical marijuana or using medical marijuana. Okay? And that the specific regulations that we're going to talk about here are legal and enforceable. And I'm going to be honest with you, this was the first case that I'm aware of really in 12 years. Well, there's another one regarding a commercial transfer thing. But this was really the first case in a long time that became back in favor of municipal regulation of medical marijuana. So what we've done with Dan and I and Matt Best, and this is now an issue that's coming up for many municipalities, is how do you want to handle this now that we have a little bit of a roadmap from the Michigan Supreme Court on how to deal with medical marijuana and caregivers? So what we did here is we took basically the Byron Township ordinance because we knew it was legal in certain aspects of it, well, we knew it was upheld as legal by the Michigan Supreme Court, and tailor made it for what we want potentially in Van Buren, for your consideration. And the overall thought here and the overall real purpose here is to, number one, limit medical marijuana caregivers to it being a residential type of activity and B, prohibited from commercial areas in the township. That's what you have in front of you. So the first section, if you're looking at the text of the amendments that have been proposed, is number one, section 2.102, the home occupation definition, which basically we just added the last sentence, which is adding medical marijuana as a caregiver as a home occupation. And then adding a new section 7.124, the medical use of marijuana home occupation. Now, when we say medical use of marijuana, we're using that as medical use is defined by the Medical Marijuana Act, which doesn't mean just using, smoking or ingesting marijuana, but medical use of marijuana involves cultivation, processing, transfer, and the use of marijuana. And what we've done here in a nutshell is, number one, make it a home occupation. Number two, put some protections and limits in there, including, but not limited to, limiting one registered primary caregiver per residence. Limiting the floor area, the 20% of the floor area are 300 square feet. We have allowed it within a residence or within a, we put in a detached garage. So just so you know, also, individuals under the Medical Marijuana Act are allowed to grow outside, but it also has to be in an enclosed locked facility. So this ordinance does not prohibit anything that the Medical Marijuana Act permits. But puts in some regulations in there regarding, you know, health, safety and welfare, making sure, or at least requiring that any and all permits for electrical plumbing, all kinds of stuff be applied for if in fact you're going to be doing some sort of, I'll call it, operation or activity that is drawing on more electricity, more light, water filtration, all those things. Put in a limit on this. We put the medical use, cultivation or possession of marijuana shall not be conducted in a manner to create odors, noise, dust, vibrations, glare, or fumes detectable to the normal senses beyond the boundaries of the premises. And, you know, that's really it in a nutshell, what we're doing here. And what we want in place here is, number one, to limit the activity, limit, or the intent here is to limit it from commercial areas, but also provide the township with some mechanism to enforce what I'll call some reasonable standards for individuals if we do have an issue. You know, if we have a neighbor complaining about activity going on next door that is creating fumes or light or drawing on power and, you know, creating odors in the neighborhood. It helps us do some regulation and limits what's going on. I mean, I'll be on, 72 plants is a lot of plants. I've seen, I've seen some grow facilities and when you see 72 plants, it looks sure like a heck of a lot more marijuana than five people need. But it just seems like a lot. So being in a residential area, this is really for the public health, safety and welfare of the residents and the neighborhoods, in addition to keeping it out of the commercial areas. Then simply the final area of the zoning ordinance, the proposed section 7.125 is simply a reiteration of the opt-out ordinances that the township has already passed, just putting it into the zoning code that we don't allow the commercial type facilities in the ordinance at this, in the township at this time. So that's it in a nutshell. Of course, if anyone has any questions, I'm available.
Thanks, Mr. Greco. Thanks for the history, hard to remember back to 2008 and also for the explanation of what's proposed. Ask for questions or comments from the commission, please.
Chair.
Commissioner Boynton.
Yep. First of all, how you doing, Dave? Good to see you again, Matt.
Good. How you doing, Commissioner?
Great, great, great. Just a couple of quick questions here. And if they seem a little offbeat, I'll apologize ahead of time. This, the, the, the construction of well, along with someone having property large enough. I'm talking some personal residential property. They have some acreage. Does this also preclude them from constructing, well, applying for or constructing an accessory building to have this done on their residential, residentially zoned property? And also, this is also cover light industrial areas throughout the township. I know it's kind of like two questions merged into one, but that's pretty much what I'm going for, kind of protecting those areas and that fix as well.
So with respect to the first question, we did not limit the, we limited the use for being a medical marijuana caregiver to definitely being an accessory use to what the primary use of a residence is, is to be a residence. And we've also limited the square footage, including the square footage up to 20% of the facility, but up to 300 square feet. So, and we have allowed a detached garage. So in my review of this, if there was room, if there was a structure that was 300 feet or less, that would pass all other zoning ordinance requirements, it would be permitted. That would be my review. I don't know if Dan has a different opinion. You know, we, but that would be my review, evaluation of that. Okay? Now, with respect to the second question, is this would prohibit it in all other areas other than residential?
Okay.
That answers your question.
Okay. Yeah. The second question, yeah. And that's the way, that's the way I was thinking. I just wanted to put that question out there and hit you with it. And Dan, how does that, how does that hit you as well? I know Dave said if you had a different point of view.
Yeah. Like if somebody constructed a pole barn or something, right?
Right.
Right. And what's your, I don't know how that would incorporate with other section of the ordinance.
Yeah. I read that, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Boynton.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you know, if someone had a property that had some acreage and they were able to come in, apply for a pole barn or what have you, an accessory structure, so to speak, that was plopped out in the middle of the back acreage of their property, would they be able to get away with that? I shouldn't say get away with something like that, not they're trying to beat the system, but you know, would they be able to apply for something along those measures?
So the way I read this is consistent with what the township attorney said, and I agree. I think we write pretty specifically that there is the, that this must be an accessory and secondary use of a dwelling that's there for residential dwelling purposes. So there would be no ability to come in and build a new pole barn for the purpose of maintaining a caregiver use. And there are provisions in there that say, you shall be in a enclosed locked facility. And then again, this is an accessory use to the home. So I think it is covered there. I don't think that type of situation would be able to arise from this ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm good.
Other questions or comments?
Madam Chair. Oh, Commissioner Atchison, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, for Dave Greco, when we talk about the caregiver can have five patients and then they can grow 12 plants. And then we talk about that this is strictly residential and we worry about these caregivers being in neighborhoods. My question is, is there anything that we could add to the ordinance or amend to it in regards to ensuring that it does not become commercial? I worry that we could potentially have like a lot of traffic that's coming and going from these residential areas to deliver. We're going to say that the caregiver has five patients and only 12 plants per patient, but it does seem to be a lot. And I just worry that it could, it could become commercial, but it could be operating other, under like residential. If you're following me, I worry about the traffic that could be coming in and out of residence. I know that the caregiver has to deliver. However, I just worry about additional traffic. However, I just worry about additional traffic, the where it becomes commercial.
Sure. So I can address that. And we put that in section nine, saw on page uh ten of your packet, but in in subsection nine says the distribution of marijuana or the use of items in the administration of marijuana shall not occur at or on the premises of the primary caregiver. Any qualifying patient shall not visit, come to or be present at the residence of the primary caregiver to purchase, smoke, consume, obtain or receive possession of marijuana. So that that was put in there intended to limit the traffic, right? Um you know, cuz cuz what what you often have is, and I don't know specifically here, but one of the ones for for home occupation, one of the always concerns in any community is somebody having a home occupation that creates a lot of foot traffic or car traffic, right? Somebody who's got a home tutoring business or uh the most popu- I think one popular one that is maybe a hairdresser, right? And 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 people and traffic are coming in and it and and it creates, even if you're living in a cul-de-sac or something like that, all of a sudden there's extra traffics, like a business coming in and out. So um so i- I'll I'll just tell you. So that subsection is intended in there to do that, to prohibit really that the transfer and really that traffic coming in and out, you know? I honestly, um so and and I think and and I think that's a legitimate uh concern and it's a legitimate clause here, alright? But I I I do want to indicate to all of you that the you know, these really are in here to deal with issues or problems where if we've got a problem where there's traffic that we can address it. But I will tell you, as far as policing marijuana and the use of marijuana, it's gonna be very hard, right? I mean, if I'm a caregiver and I've got, you know, three or four or five patients and I'll be honest, if if two or three of my patients come over for, you know, and we have a drink and smoke a joint in the back, there's nothing we can do. I mean, it's it's legal to possess and smoke marijuana, you know? But for this particular activity, we're trying to limit that traffic as much as we can. Okay, so that so that's why that's there. But it's it's always gonna be tough, yeah.
Right. I just want to make it as easy as possible for our residents and our police department. Which leads me to my next question. Um on the commercial side, municipalities uh public safety would have to regulate um commer- on the commercial side. Um I'm assuming because I didn't see anything in here in regards to the police having to regulate uh residential and with the caregivers and um is that something that has to be done or is that later? You know, going to be done at a later date? Just, I just wonder if there's gonna be additional work, I guess I should say, on our public safety.
So so the way we wrote it right now, the answer is gonna be is is no, alright? So some municipalities uh have in in fashioning something similar to this have required almost kind of like a registration and applying for a permit to be a caregiver, okay? And um that would create, number one, it creates a new license or permit for the township to administer. And then it creates a situation where to to be granted the license or permit, you have to do a review, which a review is going to inevitably involve not only zoning and planning, but the building department and the trades and likely fire and police, okay? So the now because, and again, this goes back to my, this is gonna be so hard to police. What we've done is is we didn't, after discussion, go that route and really have created this ordinance to be able to address problems if they arise rather than create a new license or permitting procedure and everything for the police and fire, right? Um because a- and and again, being frank with everyone, um there there are medical marijuana caregivers in your community right now. There's people growing a ton of plants in their basement. We don't know about it. We may never ever know about it, okay? And so the practicality of creating a permitting situation is is kind of tough, right? I mean, it 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 just is. Um so you know, upon discussing this, uh we kind of felt that let's create a situation where they have all the requirements, they're required to do it, and we're gonna deal with it on a problem solving basis rather than creating again, a new license or permit or more work for the township. Not not as a fact of not well being willing to take on the public safety and health issues and regulatory issues, but really the practicality of it, honestly, on on how to do it and what we're gonna do.
Through the chair. Uh Dave, does that mean that the caregiver takes the distribution to the patient and the patients and others are not supposed to come to him? Is that how I'm reading it? That's pretty tight.
That that's that's the way we're reading it. That's the way we wrote it and that's the way we're reading it. Now, interestingly enough, uh treasurer, you bring an interesting issue up which has been the question for twelve years, right, under the Medical Marijuana Act? Is that you're allowed to have it, you're allowed to grow it, and you're allowed to give it to someone, but how does that happen? Are you allowed to sell it? Where are you allowed to do it? Are you not allowed to do it here or there? Yeah, you know, I mean, it it just, it never uh all of those things that I told you, but it never discussed how you end up getting it in the first place or how you transfer it, okay? So this particular, um what we wanted to do was is address, number one, specifically your question, the answer is yes. But uh what uh Commissioner Atchison also brought up is we don't want foot traffic and creating well, foot traffic in a neighborhood that almost becomes like a store.
But technically, I guess if I was a patient, my caregiver was coming, I could invite two friends. And now we got three people that he might be bringing it to. So now I've got some traffic unless I make sure everybody walks in, right? I mean, that's not a, that's the pro- that to me will be the problem.
The 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 reason why yeah, the reason why this is here is that if we have a problem, we have a law or a regulation in place to see if we can address it. But honestly, it's gonna be very difficult to.
Yeah, I got you.
Because even even if I'm uh e- even if I'm your patient and you're my caregiver, I mean, there's nothing stopping me from coming over and hanging out for a little while.
Yeah, how do you just determine why I've come to your house?
Right, right.
Yeah.
And 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 it's even legal for us to smoke marijuana together at my house or your house. It is now. So like I said, uh these are really, i- i- I I think these are to really not get into the finer point of well, if I come over to your house, Treasurer Bud, and you're my caregiver, are we really friends and just hanging out and having a little marijuana? Or 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 are you my caregiver and this is is this really a transaction? It's not, it I'm telling you, it's gonna be very difficult to deal with that. But what Commissioner Atchison is is raising is the real issue is i- if it becomes obvious. If this is really something that is a dealer coming in and out, almost like, you know, public safety's been doing for drug houses. Watching, you know, things and traffic going out that we'll be able to deal with it and stop it. But uh you know, so that's that's why it's there.
Madam Chair.
I think uh didn't Commissioner Jar have questions? Did we skip over you?
I did, but if Commissioner Boynton has something apropos of the most recently uh discussed point, go ahead.
Oh, well, um I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Problem.
Jar, I I I just I just wanted to make mention that um and let the board know. Um I did have an opportunity to uh sit down um for uh quite a bit and speak with um uh 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 our director of public safety. And um we 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 spoke for quite a while and covered uh quite a few bases and um um there, they're 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 in agreement with this. Um it 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 gives them uh tools, if you will, without going too far into it. Um it does give them some additional um uh tools to be able to handle uh some of those things that Commissioner Atchison and what Treasurer Bud uh brought up. Um yes, it is gonna be difficult, but this does give them a little bit of um a little bit of bite, if you will. It does, it does.
Good point. Thank you. Commissioner Jar, you're up.
Thanks. Uh Mr. Greco. My understanding is that we have that that this proposed legislation, proposed ordinance is going to turn the primary caregiver role into a home occupation. Home occupations are allowed in our residential districts only. We have residents that don't live in residential districts, specifically the senior housing uh ordinance allows dwellings to be built outside of residential zone district. Is this proposed ordinance uh going to run into a problem where residents of our township that live in, say, senior housing complexes will not be allowed to be primary caregivers?
Uh no, I I think, and again, I'll I'll defer a little bit to Dan on this. Because the home occupation re- it refers to uh and in the ordinance refers to, I believe, a dwelling. And a dwelling is specifically a dwelling for residential purposes, so would apply to both a home and a unit. Okay, um so so and and there is no way we would be able to prevent somebody who's living in a dwelling, a unit, from being a caregiver, you know?
Okay, great.
Now, now the facility may be able to, you know, honestly.
Sure, sure. If you're, you have condo condo uh regulations might might try to prohibit it.
Private, you know, but 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 my interpretation is is that that the the word dwelling is specific to a residential, so.
Okay, thanks. You understand I'm concerned because the Supreme Court case uh seemed to hinge on Byron Township disallowing uh certain certain members of their community from participating in the Medical Marijuana Act. And that was a pivotal part pivotal part of the case. I want to make sure we're not trying to prohibit blanket prohibit certain groups of people from participating in this.
No, and and it it specifically was prohibiting the use of the caregiver using a commercial building. But I think that that would be distinguishable from a residential quote, commercial building, again, unless it's prohibited by the lease or or anything like that.
Is uh my next question is in your section B, section eleven. Just just underneath the uh the clause that controls the traffic limitation, you put a clause in that says no one under the age of eighteen shall have access to medical marijuana. Is that uh in line with the way the M M A is written or is that a local constraint? That that we're imposing?
That that would be a local constraint and it'd be access, it should be access to the medical marijuana, okay? Because it just limiting it, uh no one under the age of eighteen.
Oh. Missing word.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It really should be to the medical marijuana because it's regulating the activity. So just a little information for everyone here. Because we now have in Michigan medical and recreational marijuana, right? Uh uh when that when the recreational was passed, everyone said, you know, or one of the things was, well, why do we need medical marijuana? If it's recreational and everyone can just have it, you know, what do you need a medical marijuana card for? Now, uh number one, if you wanted to be a caregiver and provide, that'd be, that's one distinction that you can grow more than twelve plants. But the other issue also is that I I believe if you're under eighteen, you can get a medical marijuana card if you have a real debilitating condition. So there are some people that might not be legally in uh uh able to purchase recreational marijuana that may be able to get medical marijuana through the caregiver thing, but they they would have to be a registered patient, et cetera, et cetera. So it should be the.
And that and that's specifically for storage on premises, right?
Yeah, yeah, the grow and the storage, correct.
Okay, I think that's that's important. We get that it in there.
Yes.
I I had a few more comments, um but I'll 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 make an overarching, an overarching comment about the structure of of the proposal. I sort of feel, having looked at our zoning ordinances for a while, that our zoning ordinances are really there to determine how land is used with regard to a business. They're not necessarily for determining how a business should be conducted. I feel like those uh ordinances about how a business should be conducted uh belong up in our general ordinances, like in our chapter twenty-two of the general ordinances that controls things like excavations, um you know, tho- those kind of uh professions that might potentially pose a nuisance. Uh so I'm I'm wondering if you could explain why do we have the ordinance that's sort of controlling how the home occupation of caregiver uh is being regulated? Why are we putting this in the zoning ordinances instead of general ordinances, chapter twenty-two?
Sure. Uh number one, because the Michigan Supreme Court held this up as a zoning ordinance and we're really mirroring what has been held as uh um uh supportable and legal. And and it it and so and also to, so that that would be the simplest answer. I mean, we're really just mirroring what we know has been held as legal, and it is in fact a zoning ordinance that was held up as legal. With many of these, I mean, like, th- th- this is mirrored a lot on the Byron Township uh ordinance. I mean, but we added a couple of things like uh the odor thing we added, that wasn't in theirs. Um we took out the some of the permitting stuff and we did add some things that we wanted to address. Uh you know, in meeting and talking with public safety. Uh so that that's that's reason number one. Reason number two, the you know, the actual use of marijuana, broadly speaking, not just, again, using it and consuming it, but growing it, cultivating it, is really regulated by the Medical Marijuana Act. And the prior cases that, again, the townships and municipalities have lost on have very often, they 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 revert back to an indict us said, yeah, but we're not saying you can't do a zoning ordinance or reasonable zoning, right? You know, or anything like that. So that might be why this got patterned that way. Um but that's a, that's an excellent question, but like I said, the simple, the simplest answer is is we know it's legal and we just mirror it.
Okay, that that makes sense to me. I only have one other question. Uh in in section A, point seven, uh the very last sentence of that reads that registered primary caregivers are expressly prohibited from operating outside of residentially used properties. Uh this is, this statement is in the, well, the findings section. You know, the 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 township has found the following things to be true. My question is, is that statement a finding of the MMA or is that intended to be uh one of our ordinances that we want to enforce, so that primary caregivers are to be express expressly prohibited from operating outside of residentially used properties?
It's i- i- if you read the ordinance um and read it through just by it being created as a home occupation, uh you know, it it I it I think it uh indicates that we're allowing it as a home occupation, which means that we're not allowing it for anything else, right? Uh we I we I added that sentence just to make it clear.
I guess my question is whether that that sentence is intended to be in the findings section or should be down in section B, the standards and requirements? If you have to edit it to add some words, we might consider moving that section down, really a standard and requirement.
I think that makes uh sense, Ian.
Dan, you got what that was?
Yeah, I did actually, and I know uh Dave and I were uh speaking about that. Um that statement has uh prohibited properties and then we wanted to just kind of make sure it was made and then we're being specific that it's a residential accessory use that we're uh we're not allowing it in uh any non-residential properties. And that is where that statement uh was placed. But I think we're open to suggestions on that.
Yeah, I I kind of feel like it ought to be down in section B for clarity.
I think I I I don't have any objection to that, to moving that specifically into section B.
Okay, that's uh that's all I had. Thank you, everybody.
Alright.
Good discussion. All, um let me ask anything else from the commission right now, anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? Do we have anyone who wants to speak?
See no raised hands in the audience.
Okay. Really good discussion, good points. Um, a lot of detail on, uh, on a new proposal for us. Are you ready to take action? Is there something else that you want to hear or see tonight or in the future before you take action? What's the feeling of the commission?
Madam Chair, I feel like there are some edits that are going to be made to the document that we probably should review before we make the recommendation, unless someone has a other input on that subject. Dan?
Well, the, the Planning Commission can certainly, uh, make the call on that. I think, um, the edits are, uh, unless anybody has any significant objections and we want to, um, review them more, um, I, I see the, that, uh, the clause about access to the, wanna, um, and the consideration of relocating, uh, the prohibition of this activity in non-residential properties. Um, the Planning Commission can ask for another review of this, or if they're comfortable with us making the changes, they can, um, give us direction to proceed with, uh, with sending it to the board, but that's completely up to the Planning Commission.
You know, if I, if.
Madam Chair, I think we, I think if it is good for the board, I think, um, um, Dan Powers' suggestion is, 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 is pretty good. The, um, the adjustments don't, don't, don't seem to be that widespread. And if we, you know, instruct staff just to, uh, go ahead and make the changes, um, as we have stipulated, um, I think, I think, I think the board would be, uh, good for that. And that's trying to speak for the board, but just to kind of put it out there. Um, I think Dan Powers, uh, raised a very, very good point. Uh, we give them that instructions, uh, it can go on to the, um, Township Board.
And if I may, uh, through the chair, i- if I may, I think it, I think if we added the to the medical, that's a simple edit, uh, but if the, if the commission and Commissioner Jar specifically is comfortable, I think we can take that statement, that registered primary caregivers are expressly prohibited, uh, sentence, and just, we could probably just add it as number 20. You know, I think right after 19, just kind of finish it up.
Through the chair, this is Commissioner Atchison. I agree. I agree with Commissioner Boynton. Um, I know that, um, these edits may seem, um, I'm, I don't want to say that they're minor, they're, they're significant, but I think that Dan is capable. I'm not sure who brought this, uh, before us, um, but I feel like, you know, I'm glad that we are moving ahead with it, um, that we're adding some, um, something to help, um, support it so that, you know, our police have something, um, to support them, um, with this. So I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I'm fine with the edits being done and then it being, uh, presented to the Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair, I have no, I have no objection to that proposal.
Okay. So it's, it sounds like we have consensus on moving forward as well as agreement on what the changes are. Is that right? If that is right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Boynton.
Um, I move that we recommend to the Township Board the proposed amendments to limit medical marijuana caregiver activities authorized in the Michigan Initiated Law One of 2008. The amendments will be to Section 2.102, uh, definitions, specified terms, and Article Seven, General Provisions, um, to include the, um, addition of, uh, language as number 20 on the list. I don't remember exactly what it was, but, um, um, we can, we can make those, um, additions as well.
Madam Chair, could I, could I amend the motion?
Uh, let's have a second. Which, are you seconding the motion? Commissioner Jar, and then we'll make an amendment.
I, I could make, I, I could indicate what the edits were.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Uh, the edits to be the final line of point seven in Section A to become point 20 of Section B. And the addition of the word the to point 11 of Section B.
Okay, good clarification. So Commissioner Boynton, do you accept the amendment?
So amended.
And it was amended by the second Commissioner Jar. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? There'll be a roll call vote, please. Vivina Atchison?
Yes.
Jerry Bun?
Yes.
Donald Boynton?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Franzway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes.
So the motion passes and this, uh, ordinance amendment goes on to the Township Board. And thanks very much to Mr. Greco and to staff, the Director Powers, for all the research and work that we put into this. So greatly appreciated. Item two on tonight's agenda is a temporary land use approval. Walmart Small Business Saturdays. The applicant, Nicholas Smarts, on behalf of owner Andrew Klugland of Walmart, has applied seeking to occupy a 17,300 square foot area for four Small Business Saturdays, tent sale and food truck events. We held October 17th, October 24th, October 30th, and 31st of 2020. The property is located at 10562 Belleville Road. The parcel number is 83061990005714. It is located on the west side of Belleville Road between Tyler Road and North I-94 Service Drive. Do we have the applicant with us for a presentation?
And here, the applicant is here. I see Mrs. Smarts representing, uh, the Event Permits LLC Company that is working on behalf of Walmart for this case. So he is here and, um, perhaps, uh, consistent with the agenda, I will get out of the way and, uh, Mr. Smarts can explain his event. I will share, uh, uh, just a rendering that gives a good illustration of what they're proposing to do. And after his comments, if I could, I'll go through some report findings, uh, that I have for this request.
Sounds great. Thanks, Director Powers.
Smarts, uh, you can go ahead and give a presentation if you'd like.
Thank you. Uh, so first off, I just want to thank Dan Powers and the rest of the Planning Commission Board for having us tonight. Uh, so the idea behind this Walmart Small Business Saturday is that Walmart recognizes that small businesses are the heart and soul of our communities. Uh, with our local businesses hurt by some recent events, such as COVID-19, and then COVID-19 playing a role on the college football season, foot traffic being reduced in the area, uh, Walmart was looking to utilize its large private parking lot, uh, to play host to an experience, uh, which would feature a list of rotating vendors and food trucks that would help boost some econo- uh, economic, economic activity. Um, doing so, we would have this in a centralized location in Walmart's parking lot, uh, so these small businesses would have an increased exposure. Uh, we would be looking to have eight vendors per event and two food trucks. Um, we've been working with the Wayne County Health Department to abide by local COVID-19 safety plans. Um, some of these plans include having sanitation locations throughout our footprint. Um, there would be no physical contact, uh, face cover-ins would be required and mandatory. This would be enforced by Walmart Security, as well as we're working with an off-site, uh, security team, uh, that was, uh, recommended by the Chief of Police of Van Buren Township, uh, as well as limiting the amount of people to 50 people allowed inside at once, which would be monitored by a ticker. Uh, we hope that this will be able to boost the local economy, uh, for these small vendors. Does anyone have any questions regarding this?
Thanks, Mr. Smarts. Um, you're to be applauded for, uh, looking after the small business owners as well as the, the customers and the residents who would like to support those small businesses. I think we'll hear a recommendation from Director Powers and then we may have some other questions or comments. Director Powers?
Sure. Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, thanks, Mr. Smarts, for the introduction and description of the proposal. Um, this is a small event series. Uh, I have some, uh, report materials in your packet where I go a little bit more in-depth, uh, but I'll give an overview of the various comments and a reminder of what kind of standards we look at when we review temporary events, uh, like this. Um, just to put this into perspective also, uh, the Planning Commission may still have in the back of their minds that we, um, as a township, uh, between the Planning Commission and the Township Board had, uh, sought to facilitate, um, moving retail and, and food service outdoors, uh, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, but that, that proposal was a little bit different in that it involved, um, really, uh, retailers anchored in the township, using their own space and, and going outdoors. This is a little bit different. This is more of a conventional, um, tent sale event that's, uh, kind of, uh, auxiliary, but not the same as the retail that's inside of the, the Walmart store. So this is its own event, undergoing more of the conventional temporary land use process. Uh, and so we're reviewing it as such. So it, it kind of blends, uh, what we call tent sales and what we might call a fair or festival, um, kind of more similar to a tent sale, uh, in the zoning ordinance. And so per, uh, Section 7.120 of the zoning ordinance, for, uh, temporary events that extend beyond two consecutive weekends, uh, we are asking the Planning Commission to review this request. Uh, this request would occur four days, beginning, uh, coming up soon here on October 17th, uh, the 24th, the 30th, and the 31st. Um, I do have a recommendation that if there's any alterations to the dates, uh, they may be subject to further staff review or, uh, Planning Commission adjustment. This is an event that, uh, the Walmart team has worked with the Belleville Area Chamber of Commerce to, uh, bring in the different, uh, vendors. And, um, it will occupy about 17,300 square feet of space in the Walmart parking lot, about 60 parking spaces and two drive aisles. There will be rotating food trucks, as the applicant mentioned, uh, two food trucks on four different days, as well as the eight tents. Um, and there will be an occupancy, uh, limit of, uh, I believe they're, they're offering a occupancy limit of 50 inside of the, uh, enclosed area, uh, the perimeter area that's defined there. Um, there are considerations that must be considered for, uh, temporary land uses per the zoning ordinance, and I'll go through those quickly in my report. And then I'll also mention that, uh, based on those considerations, I had recommendations and conditions. The applicant has provided some responses to those conditions, uh, but we'll still want to make sure we're, um, addressing some things before the, the event here on Saturday. The event will, um, as I said, use up about 60 parking spaces. There are 775 parking spaces on the Walmart site plan, uh, of which 679 were required, uh, per the zoning ordinance when that site got built. So the site does have the parking capacity to give up some of its parking lot area for an event like this. Um, there will be some additional, um, perhaps some additional traffic to the site for this event, but I think there will also be some traffic to the Walmart store that would be, uh, participating as, as a pass-through. So, um, I don't see parking as being a significant issue for this event, um, especially with the occupancy limits. Um, there are considerations for drainage. Uh, none of the structures or tables or trucks have any significant impacts on drainage. We look also at the compatibility of adjacent land uses. Uh, the Walmart store is Zone C2, which is a general, general business zoning district. It is, uh, suited to accommodate uses such as this and significantly, the, the use here is significantly set back from adjacent R1B residential to the west and adjacent commercial to the east, north, and south. Uh, and so the, um, and the nature of the use is compatible with, uh, what's going on at the Walmart store. The fact that this is occupying parking area, you know, means that it's not a significant increase in intensity of land use compared to what would be there otherwise. This use, uh, involves the, uh, temporary structures, the tents. There will be a building inspection, uh, by the building official before the setup of the first event or by the building inspector, along with the fire, uh, chief fire inspector. And that will occur on Saturday morning. We're working on coordinating those inspections, but this will be set up in quick fashion and the event will be inspected before it begins at 11 o'clock on Saturday. The vendors will account for waste disposal. Uh, the nature of the signage that you see, signage and lighting are also part of what we consider with temporary land use. It's what you see here, there are banners that are significantly set back from the public view from the road. So this really is geared toward bringing you into the space once you're in the Walmart parking lot. There will not be a significant amount of temporary signage out by the public road right of way. The off-site traffic impacts are anticipated to be minimal. As I said, this will bring some traffic to the site and, uh, some interest in the local vendors, which is a good thing, but there will not be, uh, anticipated significant traffic demand. There's no performance bond required. We do ask that, and this is something that I, uh, shared with the applicant after the report was written, but, uh, it may be advisable to have the township on any insurance, if there is an insurance policy by the event coordination team. The, uh, CDC guideline should be used as guiding, uh, guiding force behind how this event is managed. And I will add that there are some layout adjustments that appear to be made with the recent addition of details regarding where the generator and where some of the equipment will be stored between the events, uh, as, whereas in my report, this is talked about being in the northeast corner of the store or adjacent to the northeast corner of the store. Looks like their most recent submittal shows this being adjacent to the southeast corner of the store. So we will just monitor the, the layout to make sure that the 25-foot side yard setbacks and 35-foot front yard setbacks are still met for any temporary event usage. We do recommend conditional approval, subject to the conditions that are in my report, and there's a list of those conditions. And, um, the applicant has addressed some of those conditions with a submittal letter. Um, I've gone over the bulk of the conditions in, in my previous comments, so I'm glad to answer any questions about those. But at this point, I open this up to the Plan Commission's discussion, knowing, uh, that we will coordinate with the applicant and with our inspectors before the first event date, and there is a conditional recommendation for approval for these four events.
Great, thanks, Director Powers. So questions or comments from the commission? Anyone?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Jar?
Uh, maybe Mr. Smarts could answer, or Dan. The, it looks like a four-day, four-day Small Business Saturday market, but it's also running on the 30th and the 31st, which are consecutive days. Is the plan to leave the, the tents up overnight on the 30th, uh, so that they're still installed on the morning of the 31st? What's happening there?
Uh, from the 30th to the 31st, they will be taken down and then repop back up on the morning of the 31st.
Okay, that's, that's good. No overnight security required to watch over the site then. Thank you.
Correct.
Anything else? Commissioner Jar? Commissioner Atchison?
No, I'm here, did not have a question.
Uh, Commissioner Fransway, it's hard, it's hard when I can't see you to know who's asking to speak. Is it Commissioner Franzway?
Yes.
Carol? Okay, there you go. You're up.
My, my question was, where are you drawing, um, tho- from local businesses? Is it, how, I, I, like, how far away? Businesses in Canton or just? how, like how far away businesses in Canton or just in Van Buren Belleville something there?
Uh, they're in the Van Buren uh, Belleville area. Um, for this weekend, we have a few of them secured. I could pull up their location. Uh, but everything is very, very local. Uh, let me see if I could get a list. From what I have here, everything is in uh, from Belleville.
From that. So there'll be eight businesses and two food trucks all based from Belleville?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Director, are you able to hear me? This is Tom.
Sounds, sounds like we have another uh, person from the working team, Tom.
I can't get, I can't get rid of Batman, so I apologize. I tried and it's not working. Better than what I had for this morning. I just want, I, I work with Nick and I also want to say thank you very much to the commission and to Director Power for having us tonight. So thank you for that. Um, I was trying to, I wasn't able, I tried to put my hand up, so I apologize. It wasn't seeming to work for me, but um, Commissioner Jar, you had asked a question if the tents are staying up on Friday night into Saturday. The intention is to keep the tents up, but to empty the tents of all the belongings. Now, if that's a deal breaker, we can take them down, but by the time we would take them down Friday night, it would literally be time to start putting them back up again. Literally by the time we got done taking them down, it would be midnight and they'd have to start going back up again. We do have security uh, there on the overnight, but it's just, there's nothing in the tents. The tents will be emptied out totally. And by the way, just for the commissions, uh, just so you understand, there's no one going under any of the tents at any time during the uh, hot hours of the event. It's just the vendors, the small business owners that are under the tent. And then any participants would walk up to the tent, but there will never be anyone under a tent other than the business owner. Um, with your permission, Commissioner Jar, we would like to keep the tents up overnight because we have to start putting them up as soon as we took them down.
Yeah, I, I thought that might be the intent. Uh, Director Power, is there any special handling that we need to do when we have an overnight setup uh, with regard to additional security or other insurance constraints that we might have?
There's nothing specific in the ordinance that we would have to monitor. This would be just something that would, uh, we want to be mindful of from a security standpoint for the overall site. Uh, there's nothing in the temporary land use ordinance that I'm aware of that would prohibit that. It's a short event and uh, as long as they have a way to secure the site and keep the high value items secured and stored away, uh, then I think you can reasonably uh, review that and consider it.
Mr. Hannigan, your plan is to rope off the tent area and have your security prevent uh, midnight incursions under the tents?
That is, that is absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
Batman thanks you as well.
Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner.
Other questions or comments from the commission? I'll ask you, Mr. Smarts or Mr. Hannigan, will you confirm your hours of operation for me, please?
Nick?
So the active hours are going to be from eleven to five, eleven AM to five PM.
Great. Thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this agenda item, questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Anyone?
Uh, through the chair, I'll just acknowledge, um, I, I see that David McEneli is on the call. I just want to commend the fire department for being adaptive. This was a application that they've reviewed and processed with us pretty quickly, so um, I don't know if David has any, it looks like David doesn't have his hand raised, so I won't put him too much on the spot, but just want to thank the fire department for reviewing this with us.
We, we have already put the wheels in motion to make sure that uh, Van Buren has been added to the insurance and we'll submit that tomorrow.
That's great. That's great, gentlemen. Thank you. Sounds like everyone had a, a pretty good working session together. That's wonderful.
Madam Chair? Uh, you, you asked to confirm the hours of operation. I note that they're spelled out differently in uh, Director Powers' report. He has them listed as eight to nine PM, which is actually longer than, than the proposed hours. Does that, uh, does that matter for any kind of motion we want to make? Do we need to know?
Can we, can we correct that? My, that's, that's my doing and I apologize, Commissioner. So that's the hours that we're going to be allowing the uh, people to come in and install the, their merchandise into their tent. And then they should be able to get out of there within an hour, but we, we gave them an extended period window of time, but it is the hot hours are actually eleven to five.
So there's the, there's the hours that are in the memo, just so I can clarify the hours that are in the memo. I'll allow you set up and tear down time, but when you have public there is eleven to five.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. Got it.
So any answer to Commissioner Jar's question, no uh, changes to the recommending memo. It's covered.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So. Sure. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for what, for doing it and thanks for being uh, so, so helpful with the information. I'll ask one more time, any other questions or comments from the commission? Are you ready to take action? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Richard Jar?
Uh, in the matter of item number two, case twenty dash zero twenty-nine, temporary land use approval Walmart small business Saturdays. Uh, I move that we grant the temporary land use permit on behalf of Andrew Kluglin of Walmart uh, for a, a seventeen hundred, so, cool, one seven three zero zero square foot area for four small business Saturdays tent sale and food truck events on October seventeen, twenty-four, thirty, and thirty first of two thousand and twenty. Uh, property located at one zero five six two Belleville Road on the west side of Belleville Road between Tyler Road and North I ninety four Service Drive. Uh, subject to the conditions uh, spelled out in the staff report of October sixth, twenty twenty.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Franzway, support. Any discussion on the motion? A roll call vote, please.
Medina Atkinson?
Yes.
Jerry Budd?
Yes.
Donald Boynton?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Franzway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. So the motion carries. Um, gentlemen, thank you very much. We wish you all success and I know you'll continue to work with staff to make sure that everything that you need and the township needs is ready to go for Saturday morning. We hope to see you all out there.
Thank you. We appreciate your time tonight.
Our pleasure.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. We are to the general discussion part of tonight's agenda. We have a couple of staff updates. So Director Powers, I'm going to go right to you.
Good. Thank you, Chair. There are just a couple of activities and projects related to our residential growth and some projects related to the airport that the planning commission is not necessarily in a position to have, a position to have to do an extensive review, but it's worth keeping you aware of some of the growth in the community. So uh, as we enter kind of the last stretch of a construction season here, a couple of significant residential projects uh, have made a lot of progress this year, and so they are looking to move from one phase of construction to the next. The first is going to be uh, not, in no particular order of the construction starting, um, although this may end up being the same order. The first is Victoria Park Phase Two, which is the residential development to the north of E course road and to the east of Morton Taylor Road. Uh, Phase Two will include sixty-seven additional uh, units. The land has already been divided. This is a site condominium project the planning commission approved in two thousand and six and the phase one project has commenced over the years. The last few units, to my understanding, are uh, going up for sale or have been uh, have most, most units have been built and the project will be completed in phase one soon. So we'll be seeing uh, pre-construction and construction activities for the road and the underground utilities for phase two soon. So um, the site is already basically graded, uh, and there is a, like I said, the units have been assigned, but um, in terms of land division, but there will be construction activity for that growth. Similarly, uh, Cobblestone Creek, uh, zipping down to the southwest corner of the township, uh, where we're now talking about east of Hoff Road, south of West Huron River Drive. Cobblestone Creek is adjacent to the Cobblestone Ridge. Um, Cobblestone Creek is now entering its third phase and that will be sixty-nine detached uh, single family site condominium units, uh, similar process for that site. So there is going to be continuing uh, construction activity in those areas and more housing in the township that's already been approved uh, long ago in both cases for the, by the planning commission. Uh, it's just that the projects are now moving into their next phases. The um, on the airport site, the planning commission back in May, we looked at the proposal for active arrow for a twenty, uh, roughly twenty-four thousand square foot airplane parts uh, storage uh, and uh, distribution uh, business and that, that still has not come in for building permits yet. But I do want to just make the planning commission aware of some other developments that are under review right now. Uh, I'll share this screen. In addition to the active arrow site, there's Anglin Aviation. Uh, this map is pretty close to accurate here. So um, if you're looking west of Beck Road and south of E course, there's the um, kind of the inset of the, the high activity sites within the Willow Run Airport of Van Buren Township. And um, in addition to active arrow, like I said, Anglin Aviation is proposing to put uh, five fourteen thousand seven hundred square foot T hangar buildings. We're pretty close to getting, I think, final uh, site plans for that project. And when that occurs, I'll bring those to the planning commission as was done for um, the active arrow site. Uh, site three there on the screen, Yankee Air Museum, their existing museum space remains, but they are now also um, in, in detailed design for plans uh, for educational hangar buildings and some office space uh, and shop near the southwest corner of the dead end of Tyler Road. Uh, and again, when that project is, is reaching a point of final civil site plans, I'll give a more comprehensive update to the planning commission. Uh, and also Av Flight, uh, which is also building hangers. That's another aviation company, private aviation company. Um, their application is under review and they're proposing to build uh, hangers and office space up, uh, I believe that's A Street up near the northwest corner of this pocket of development. So there's a lot of, a lot of development happening at Willow Run Airport. As this proceeds, again, I'll bring you site plans when the site plans come to fruition. I just wanted to give you an interim update. You might um, be hearing things or uh, just be curious. So I thought it was a good time to bring that up.
Great. Thanks, Director Powers. Good to be busy and uh, obviously you've been very busy. Other items under general discussion from the commission or the audience? Anyone? Nothing else tonight? Lots of good discussion. If no one has anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Atkinson support.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkinson support. And if uh, you're ready to adjourn, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Good meeting.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.